This meeting. And calling this meeting to order for May 25, 2022. And just for record, this is a very specific meeting. We're not here to do anything with the exception of reconciliation of the 14 challenge provisional ballots for the 2022 general primary election. So just want to make sure everyone understands that. I understand that there are some members of the public who are on this call. Some of them may have ballots in question. I would invite you to speak during the portion of the meeting or the hearing for the public. And we will get to that point shortly. Ms. Slonsky, call to order, please.
Mr. Bale?
Here.
Mrs. Shalman?
Here.
Mr. Scatella?
Here.
Mr. Winarski?
Here.
And Chairman Rennie?
Here. That was called to order, by the way. Around.
We got you.
Called to order. Thank you. All right. That being said, we will move to a hearing of the public. And. I don't know what. Do we have anyone specifically signed on to speak? Otherwise, I'll just go.
No, we do have a few members, a few voters are on the arm and called us right now. I'm not sure if anyone wants to speak, but.
I see. I think that's Freda there.
Yes, I have my hand up. Can?
Yeah, I can see that. Okay. Freda, if you would go ahead and speak first. And again, name and his county.
So I'm Freda Tepfer. I'm Erie City resident. I was a judge of elections in the last election. I just want to give some feedback about provisional ballots and some of the things that led to having them. There's so many details to being a judge of elections. And I actually had to open a sealed envelope to stamp the ballot after I forgot to stamp the ballot. I think I did something else wrong of putting the wrong thing on the wrong envelope and I had to open that. So there's a lot of things either a poll worker or a voter can do wrong to mess up a provisional ballot. And I don't know what the challenges are, but I'm just mentioning that. The other thing that led to provisional ballots, or maybe should have led to provisional ballots, was we had a number of people who believed they were registered as either Democrats or Republicans, who we did not have listed that way. And then when they went to the state website, they were not listed that way either. I think one of them may have voted provisional. But the point is that I know that in 2020, a number of people received received the wrong ballot, you know, the ballot of the wrong party. So I don't know how that happens. And. They were not. Anyway, that's, that's the feedback I have about provisional ballots. All of us judges do the best we can and the clerks and everybody helping us, but it's a confusing process. So there's a lot of room to make a mistake on provisional ballot.
Thank you. Okay. I can't see the names.
Cicely Gingrich. Okay, is her hand raised?
Cicely Gingrich. You can go ahead, give your name, municipality, and then you have three minutes.
Okay, I'm in Milker Township. And I voted by mail twice before with no issues. This time, the U.S. Postal Service said that it was delivered to my house on May 2nd. I never did receive it. So I don't know if somebody took it out of the mailbox or there was a fraudulent reporting that I did receive it. The reason I had to vote provisionally was that I left off county. My full address was there, including the zip code. And I feel like a child could have looked up the county. Also, I signed exactly where the poll worker told me to sign. And I'm now told that I should have signed it in two places. So either the, the poll worker was, obviously, the poll worker was not trained sufficiently. I, I just did what she told me to do.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
There's a David Birch told. I can't read her last name, Kathy.
Okay.
Kathy Herzog.
Kathy.
David, exactly.
Okay, David Birch told, if you would like to go ahead. And again, your name, municipality. And then you can begin from there, three minutes.
This is Kathy Herzog. I'm speaking on behalf of David Birch told. I'm his proud attorney. And I'm also speaking on behalf of myself. I don't know if you want me to go separately or what. Basically, we walked down to the polling site and I drove down in my power wheelchair specifically to vote. And the poll worker that was assisting us, he kept getting confused. And apparently, we did not sign enough of the spaces. I know that we had to take the envelope apart and redo it again a couple times. And it was the first time that we've been out of the house since COVID. We took that risk to go down there to get that vote in because we didn't have time to mail in our stuff. And we would just really appreciate it if you would please count it because there was nothing that we did wrong, that we believe that we did wrong. It's just that the person assisting us was very confused with having to do things. And it was just kind of frustrating that we couldn't get that right. And I couldn't get close enough physically to see the, the envelopes and the forms. Someone was assisting me because of my disability. And the same thing with Dave. And, you know, we, we didn't get to look at things ourselves to see if it was done. We were relying on the staff at the polling site to ensure that it was done properly. So I'm, I'm sorry for the person that was confused. But I don't think it was, should be held against us. And I think our votes should be counted as legitimate votes, please. Thank you. Also, I would like to correct my name. It's H-E-R-T is in Thomas. Z is in zebra. O as in Oscar. G is in golf. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Apologies for the state there.
That's okay. It's, 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 happens a lot.
Is there anyone else on the call or anyone else from the public who wishes to speak?
I don't have anyone else that has a hand raised now.
Any other members of the public who wish to be heard today? Finally, any other members of the public who wish to speak? Seeing hearing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the action for consideration by the board and the reconciliation of the provisional ballots. Now, I believe we're going to have these up on the screen. For council to look at. I did speak with Mr. Tallow Rico this morning, just before. I want council members to know. And I think I'd like to wait until we get a look at these ballots, don't you think? Before I discuss with them what his findings were. Okay, because I want them to approach it. And so. Sure they're understanding. So can we begin that?
And Madam Chair, if you don't mind, as Tanya is displaying the ballots, I might jump in just with different statements I have from members that were not able to be present, from voters that were asked to pass along their statement as well.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Go ahead, Tanya. Did you want to raise your first name? The first name is Brian Oberlander II. Mr. Oberlander was hoping to be on the call today. He said he's been a voter for over 15 years. And he just incorrectly had his municipality and the county just mixed up between Springfield and Erie. You had to see it on there. He just flipped those side to side. He could be apologized, but it's something he just, you know, didn't intend to do by any means. Sorry. Madam, you can reduce the full screen for the room here. I think if we were to speak.
If you go up to those three little dots. There we go. On the, on this, your little box.
Oh, on my box.
Click spotlight.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much. So we can see right where Tanya's finger is there. In between Erie and Springfield, those are just mixed up. It should have been Springfield first, then Erie.
Okay. And. You want to go. As your board, please have given it yes or no on individually or individually.
I can see your pen.
Okay. All right.
Go to the vote. We're going to go with Mrs. Shalman.
You've been, we raised the question.
Of Brian Oberlander. Are we vote, we're voting in favor of accepting his explanation and accepting his provisional ballot? Mrs. Shalman, yes? Okay. Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
And Chairman Rennie?
Yes. For the record, Mr. Tallow Rico.
And we have Mrs. Gingrich, who's on the line, Cicely Gingrich. And she, of course, as she mentioned, she explains what happened there. Simply missing a signature. You see, her signature is on the bottom there. But unfortunately, missed the signature in that affidavit section in the middle. But she did sign on the very bottom.
Understood. Any discussion? And we did not receive a mailing ballot, right?
No.
She said she didn't receive it. I'm just clarifying.
As of this moment, no, we have not received it.
Okay. Questions to accept?
To accept the ballot, the provisional ballot of Mrs. Cicely Gingrich? Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mrs. Shalman?
Yes.
And Chairman Rennie?
Yes. And again, Mr. Tallow Rico agrees with this. And also says yes.
Mary Jo Jarvie. And same case as previous, missing a signature. We see the signature on the bottom, just not in the middle there. Oh, it's sorry, hers is missing an address as well.
She missed the addresses.
The address. See, but what she had done though, she has her address in that middle section toward the bottom. The center is the affidavit. And she put her address below where basically you have moved, you fill out that section in that third section there. So that's the confusion. I did not speak to her. But again, I can see that her intent, it's hard to see. There we go. The second section misses the address, but she did complete the address there on the third section, thinking that was the place to complete the address.
Yes. Any discussion from the board members?
That one's hard to read, Tanya. But are we able to physically look at the other ones?
Sometimes on the screen, they're hard to read through Zoom as well.
What was that, Megan? She can't read the names on the screen. What is the name on the ballot? Can you repeat the name on the ballot? The name on the ballot is Mary Jo Jarvie. And I'm sorry, ma'am, you're the attorney for the McCormick campaign?
That's correct. This is Carolyn McGee. I apologize for not chiming in earlier. I couldn't hear until this hearing had already started. Or something wrong with the audio on my end. I apologize.
Carolyn McGee, okay, thank you. My apologies, we are accepting, expecting Attorney Tim Walker. I thought he'd be present, so we will mark you down.
Thank you. And we did have an objection to this ballot as, as being incorrectly filled out.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all for to accept.
To accept the ballot, the provisional ballot for Mary Jo Jarvie. Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mrs. Shalman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
And Chairman Rennie?
Yes. And once again, Mr. Tallow Rico also said yes.
Okay, we have Kathy Herzog. We just heard from Kathy a few moments ago. And with Kathy, right there, same thing with the signature. So signature on the bottom, but not in the, in the middle spot there on the affidavit. A little easier to.
But I think just people who are on the call, let's hold it up first to the chairman. It appears to be, yeah. Yes, she's, she's standing. I saw it. Any discussion? All to accept.
To accept the provisional ballot for Kathy Herzog? Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mrs. Shalman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
And Chairman Rennie? She can ask questions.
Yes.
I'm sorry? Ms. McGee would like to know if she can ask questions. Madam Chair, it's up to you. We did have the hearing of the public.
I think, I think at this point, I would say no. You know, I don't find this appropriate to be increasing the vote. So we won't. We've got the chance, so. So.
And, and we did answer all the questions for Attorney Walker, who was the attorney here during the challenge. And I spoke to him afterwards as well. We're just going to skip out of order and go back to Mr. David Birch told. So Kathy and David worked together voting. At the same location. And as she mentioned, she is his, our attorney. So David Birch told, missing a signature, same situation, sign at the very bottom, but not there in the middle. At the affidavit section.
Is there any discussion by the board?
To accept the provisional ballot for Mr. David Birch told. Mrs. Shalman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
And Chairman Rennie?
Yes. And once again, Mr. Tallow Rico agrees with this decision.
We have Wanda Vegas. Unfortunately, Wanda was missing her first name right at the top of the, I'm sorry, her last name right at the top of the provisional ballot. In that first section where you complete your name and your address, unfortunately, she is missing her last name. She did sign twice as needed, but unfortunately, missing her last. Her last name, yes, excuse me.
Madam Chair?
Oh, yes. Mr. Winarski?
Madam Chair, can I see the ballot again? I did not get to see it.
Yes, sir. Sorry.
Are you okay with that, Mr. Winarski? I mean, not, not the vote, but can you, are you able to see it well enough? All right. Any, any discussion from the board? You mean none?
To accept the provisional ballot?
No.
To accept the provisional ballot of Miss Wanda Vegas? Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mrs. Shalman?
Yes.
And Chairman Rennie?
Yes. And again, it's something Mr. Tallow Rico agrees with.
Next, we have Nancy Dombrowski. And Nancy is missing the pertinent information there on the affidavit details. And the second section, of course, completing basically everything that she has mentioned below. So she completed section two, I'm sorry, section three instead of section two. She mixed up the sections there. But does have her address, so put it in section three instead of two.
Any discussion by the board?
The precinct will be listed in the right. To accept the provisional ballot for Nancy Dombrowski? Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mrs. Shalman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
And Chairman Rennie?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Helen M. Wood. And Helen is just missing the municipality and the county. I did speak to her and she said it was her intent, you know, she thought everything was complete based on speaking with the judge of elections. You'll see right there in that second section, missing the municipality and the county.
You see that one?
Yep. Yeah, on the ballot itself, we'll be able to determine of the precinct, you know, where, where, when she receives the ballot. Can be far left or on the top.
Questions or comments from the board?
To accept the provisional ballot of Helen M. Wood? Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mrs. Shalman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
And Chairman Rennie?
Yes. And again, Mr. Tallow Rico agrees with that, as well as the one before this Dombrowski ballot.
Next, we have Caitlin Pamela Cornwell. And Caitlin is miss, missing similar to the previous, municipality and county. In that middle section. But has all her other pertinent information completed.
Any discussion or comments from the board?
To accept the provisional ballot for Caitlin Pamela Cornwell? Mrs. Shalman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
And Chairman Rennie?
Yes. And Mr. Tallow Rico agrees with this decision.
Next, we have Vicki N. Donahue. And just missing the municipality. Similar to the previous, has all the other pertinent information completed. She did, in that second section, as you can see, she did move it down to the third section. She completed the address and pertinent information on the third section instead of the second. And I also did speak to Ms. Donahue on the phone, and that's exactly what she explained.
Comments or questions by board members? As then, all for quote?
To accept the provisional ballot of Vicki N. Donahue? Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mrs. Shalman?
Yes.
And Chairman Rennie?
Yes. And Mr. Tallow Rico also agrees with this decision.
Next, we have Jean Downey. And Jean Downey is missing a signature.
There goes beef and cheddar.
Madam Chair, I do want to note as well that Vicki Donahue was the first that was challenged by the. Madam Chair, I do want to note as well that Vicky Donahue was the first that was challenged by the Oz campaign. All the previous were challenged by the McCormick campaign. Vicky was the first one from the Oz campaign. So the rest of these continuing from the Oz campaign. David Burschel is included in that list as well. Just for the record, I want to make sure we have that number.
Understood. Thank you. Questions? Questions or comments by the board?
Call for the vote. To accept the provisional ballot for Jean Downey, excuse me. Jean Downey, Mr. Wunarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
And Sherwin Renn?
Yes. Mr. Teller Rico agrees with this decision.
Next, we have David L. King. I spoke to Mr. King on the phone. He apologizes, but he thought he signed everywhere that he was necessary to sign. He is missing the signature on that second section, the affidavit, but he did sign on the bottom.
Questions or comments from the board?
To accept the provisional ballot for David L. King. Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Wunarski?
Yes.
And Sherwin Renn?
Yes. And Mr. Teller Rico agrees with this decision.
Then we already had David Burschel previously, so we'll move on to Carol L. Constantino. I spoke to Carol directly, and she's missing the address, and she had said she had thought everything, I'm sorry, Carol is missing the municipality. You thought the challenge was first on the address, but it is all set on the municipality that was mixed there. She was under the impression that the board of, I'm sorry, the judge of elections was going to complete that for her. But Carol apologizes, and her intent was to complete it as its entirety, as you can see with every section that she had completed, doing more than necessary.
Discussion or comments from the board?
To accept the provisional ballot for Carol L. Constantino. Mrs. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Wunarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
And Sherwin Renn?
Yes.
Our last voter is Susan Seaver. And I did speak to Susan directly. She is missing the municipality, and again, was under the impression she had everything completed for the judge of elections and her precinct. We see, of course, it's there in that middle section, that second section.
Any discussion or comments by the board?
To accept the provisional ballot of Susan Seaver. Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Wunarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherrill?
Yes.
And Sherwin Renn?
Yes. And once again, Mr. Teller Rico agrees with this decision. All right, that completes the challenged provisional ballot and this section of the agenda. We will move on to number five, which is other questions and comments from the board, if any.
I'm just like this thing that I have this judge of elections that's probably about 20 years. And it takes a little while to really get the hang of the violence completed under the judge. And, and we had so many requests this year
Thank you. And I appreciate that, the expertise and the experience. I will agree with that, even just being here and having the judges come down at the end of each evening, including this past primary. It's a lot for a day, and they do a lot of work, and they are to be commended for the work that they do. There are occasional human errors, but the intent, I think, has to be clear, rest in consider it. So, thank you. Other questions, comments by the board?
Yes, sir.
We also have the staff that puts all the numbers up, but they just
Just want to say thank you to the elections staff, I mean, with this number compared to the share of those that took handfuls to be the only ones in these, you know, rather simple mistakes that they could be made. I think I did a great job, which will pass along. Thank you.
Notion set, how it's going? Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll accept motion to adjourn.
This is Carolyn McGee. On behalf of the McCormick campaign, I need to note for the record that we are maintaining our objections that were lodged by Mr. Walker, and that we would ask the board to set those ballots aside to allow for the appeal.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I was actually about to ask the same question. Will these 14, even if added to the current totals, will they be sequestered?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Everybody understand that the votes, we are approving them, they will be sequestered. All right, this meeting is adjourned.